All of our votes as a roll call vote. With that, I would ask everyone to please join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the true republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note to self, fix that delay for next time. Not a problem. Okay, so we've got three public hearings scheduled for tonight after which we'll move to residents' section, and we've got four items of new business. So we'll open it up with our first item. National Grid petition poll 1-50 on Ipswich Street.
Motion to waive the public reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, waiving the reading of the public notice. Okay. Do we have someone here to speak on this item?
Hey, doing's your Ian Tilly, National Grid Electric. Anybody had any questions or concerns about the pole isolation?
Could you give us a quick high-level overview of what it is? I know we've got two items.
The National Grid has a pole in a rural community that is over 200 feet long, and the communications has tied off to our secondary because it's so long. It's probably only about 12 feet off the ground. So we're just trying to make it correct and put a pole in between the spin. They'll lift everything up for everybody, make it safe up.
Perfect, thank you. I've reviewed this, and we'll open it up to the board, questions, comments from the board.
I got a question. So this is going to be an additional pole that's going to be installed?
It is going to be an additional pole.
Okay, so the existing pole, is this adding to it or is it just a brand new pole?
There will be no removal.
No removal.
It's just a spin over 200 feet.
Yep.
So all the communications and electrical lines are, it's a giant sag in them. Because a regular spin is maximum up to 150 feet, it's 200. So we're just trying to correct that, an issue for the community.
Okay. The pole location, is it going to the edge of the layout?
It will be right in line with the color.
Okay. So while we're here and we're talking about pole relocations, every time National Grid comes in front of us, I say the same thing to them. That we are installing sidewalks, we're doing improvements through our community, and we're adding certain improvements, and we want to make sure all poles, when they're installed, are right to the edge of the limit line, taking into effect that if there isn't sidewalks there, there may be sidewalks there. So, you know, if there's something there and you're putting something new in, we want to make sure it's on the edge of limits. I want to give you something before you leave. Here's one of the locations that I have a major problem with. We just installed new sidewalks on Shawshin Street, and I bring this up each and every time that we are doing something. So I got the pole numbers for you, I can gladly share them with you.
Sure, no, it'd be fine.
But there's two poles that are in the middle of the sidewalk where we just installed brand-new sidewalks. If they cannot move them and put them to the edge of the line, I would like to have something in writing explaining why they can't. I know I've brought this up a couple of times to find out. I've heard different reasons for it, but I see absolutely no reason. If we can put bitconk around the pole, why these two poles can't be relocated to go to the edge of the line. So I can give you the pole numbers, I'll gladly give you that information and find out why that things. And anytime National Grid is installing poles in our community, I want that to be taken into consideration. That everything is going to be put to the back. Even if there's nothing there, there may be at some point. So I just want to bring that up. I understand, looking at the plan, they may be in line with the other poles, but I don't know, not sure if those other poles were put at the edge of the limit either. And they may just be there and just, you know, if we have to do something, I don't want to be putting pavement around them, much in the same way we just did those.
And these are new poles that they just put in?
No, the poles were there, but they didn't put the poles at the edge of the line. If you go along, the majority of the poles are on the edge, two of them are not. So two of them were pushed out. Most likely, somebody hit a pole, I'm guessing, and then they just put another pole and replaced it and put it a couple of feet over and then moved the lines. And it's the easiest thing to do would be just to transfer it. I don't want the easy thing. I want the poles put back where they were. I want them off the edge of the line. I don't want poles in sidewalks, and I don't want to have to relocate them. So if we do, we do it when we're doing the construction right now, then we never have to have this problem. But we have obviously two of them in a brand-new sidewalk that was installed the length of Shawshin Street. It's a very busy residential area, we get cars going up and down there, and I don't want, when we're cleaning and plowing those during the wintertime, going around telephone poles is even more difficult. And so I don't want somebody who's in a wheelchair or handicap trying to get up and down those sidewalks to have to go around the pole in any way. So I hope you can take a look at these. Like I said, I'll give you both pole numbers before you leave, and then you can get back to us to find why these are here or what you can do about it.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. So I have to actually correct myself here. Before we go to our deliberation, this is a public hearing, so I want to open it up. Were there any residents that wanted to speak on the Ipswich pole petition 1-50? Seeing nothing. Could I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Public hearing is closed. Okay, I will go back to other questions, comments from the board on this item.
I was just going to ask the same thing, as long as if there's any rebuttals here, I don't have an issue with it, it's very straightforward. But if there's obviously rebuttals, we'd like to hear them. But seeing there's none, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The rebuttal list is for a resident that lives in Danvers. So they're not the folks, I think, that rent into that facility. Do you know if the people that live there were notified?
I do know.
Okay. I think it would be good, just for the record, if we can notify folks that live in rental properties or they could be notified, people who live in on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, any questions, comments from your end? Thank you. Mr. Montori, can we capture two items for a follow-up on? One, to Mr. Kratman's point around working with the DPW to define what that setback should be, so we can, in the future, when they're doing these reviews, we can make sure that is part of the process. Additionally, if we can explore, to Ms. Wellman's point, notification including renters of rental properties, not just property owners. Okay. Barring any other questions or comments on this, what is the pleasure of the board on item one?
Motion to approve the pole position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is unanimous for item one. Okay, moving on to item number two. Don't go too far, because you're up again. National Grid petition for pole 92 East Street.
Make a motion to waive the public reading.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, it is unanimous to waive the public reading. Alrighty, sir.
So the job on East Street is pole 92, and the customer requested that we move it 18 feet to the side. If you're looking at the job from the street, that's because they put it in a brand-new driveway, it's a brand-new development going in, and it was just to convenience that the customer moved it 92 feet. I mean, I'm sorry, 18 feet, pole 92. And since we can help them out and get that new resident out, business, we'll be happy to do it.
Perfect, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the pole petition for pole 92 on East Street? Seeing no one move, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, to close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the board on pole petition 92 for East Street?
I have the same comment, just to make it very clear. I'm looking at the location of this. It's along the edge of the roadway. There's no sidewalks on either side where this happens. These poles happen to be relocated. I see where you're moving it over, so this actually, looks like there's nothing even right there where the business is going in. So, you know, but once again, this is a busy street, East Street. In the future, we may be installing sidewalks up this, we're hoping to. So all poles, when you're doing the survey work out there, put it to the edge of the layout line, whatever the down layout line may be. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to acknowledge the October 21 memo from the Public Works Department. I think that's the first time that they've offered commentary, and I think it's good practice. So I want to thank the town manager for making sure that that happens for us. And I believe the comments they offered were helpful, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Perfect. Barring any other questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the joint own-pole 92 on East Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, it is unanimous for the approval of the pole petition for 92 East Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Item number three, Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, change of category liquor license amendment.
Motion to waive the public reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to waive the public reading. Roll call, vote. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, to waive the public reading. It looks like we do have somebody here to speak on that, so if you could introduce yourselves and give us a quick high-level overview of what you're up for.
My name's Attorney John Meradian, Demakis Law Offices of Lynn. And with me is Chris Pickert, who is an employee at the Cracker Barrel here in Tewksbury. We're seeking approval tonight of upgrading the license for a beer and wine pouring license to alcohol license. Cracker Barrel wants to add a few liquor items to the menu, so that's the request before you tonight. The beer and wine license was issued earlier this summer. They've been selling beer and wine for the past few months, and they issued no incidents. And, you know, they want to add Bloody Marys, Jack and Cocks to the menu as such. That's the request before the board tonight. Any questions, we'll help you to accept to us.
Perfect, thank you. So I'm going to put a pin in that for one second. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous to close the public hearing. Alrighty. Questions or comments from the board?
I can start, maybe it's directly through the chair, through Mr. Montori. Essentially, we'll be pulling back the wine and beer liquor license here and distributing one now with obviously beer, wine, and malt beverages.
Correct.
And what's the count, I know it's probably going to be asked on here, is...
Yes, so right, we have three available. You approved one for Livington Bakery a few weeks ago. You approved tonight, that'll be one within the quota. But we did have a special act passed that provided seven new licenses for the town, five all alcohol, like a two-volt, no wine involved, which are not counted in the ABCC quarter and separate, so we still would have six.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman.
Good.
Good, all the paperwork's aligned, yep, thank you.
Questions, comments? Ms. Wellman?
No, I thought your application was complete. I understood what you were asking. How has it gone with the wine and malt license that you have? How's it been going?
Really well, almost like, no complaints whatsoever, built and sales, I'm good with it.
Okay, and you had requests for other drinks, so that has driven...
Yeah, and I believe the whole company wants to be doing it, so they're doing it.
Should say, it's being rolled out across the country in terms of where licenses are available to upgrade to full liquor. Also, we'll be back probably in a week or two to add Chris here as a manager of record, we're going to be changing that also, that's a different...
That's a different process. Right. Okay, and are you going to change your hours of serving liquor, is any bad change?
Right now, it's Monday through Saturday, 11 to 11, and Sunday's 12 to 11. I think we might request a 10 a.m. Sunday, but we'll do that when we change the mandate.
Okay, so you're just looking to change it, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Kratman?
That was the question I had, was just the hours operation. I don't know if you're going to be doing early Sunday mornings or some sort of thing, I'm not that a punch or anything. But bring that to us at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I have no questions.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, my colleagues did a great job, my two questions were hit on. Your application is complete, and I am good here, so I will move it to what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, making a motion to approve the change of category for the license for Cracker Barrel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, guys, best of luck, see you in a few weeks.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we are at the residents' section. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Seeing nothing. Moving on to item four, state election warrant for November 8, 2022. So this is the standard approval of the state election warrant, outlining precincts, state offices that are up for election, and questions to be on the ballot. This item does require a board action. Questions, comments? Open for discussion.
I just got a quick question to the town manager. I know we've brought this up, but because this is a, we had the redistricting and we have additional names on the ballot and different things in, are we recouping any costs of that, that the state, from the state, for the additional, just what we're doing additional for the election, for all the extra things that we need to apply for?
There should be some reimbursed, but we just don't know how much and for what that reimbursement's for. They did indicate in the beginning that we'll be reimbursed similar to the 2020 election for the extra work and the extra time that was put in. We're tracking a lot of costs and we'll see what we can.
And the other only question that really doesn't have to do with this, but it has to do with the election. I know we, didn't we purchase, or we have a bunch of sign boards that we have that go out, and I just haven't seen them out a lot during the elections. You know, we were going to put them out on the corners to do, I know a lot of other municipalities have some sort of thing to, you know, remind people to get out to vote, and just to, you know, I know we put it on the board, whatever it is, but we got a very little turnout in the community. Anything that we can do to put something out just to get people to remind, just an additional reminder that there's voting going on. I know we send it out and we put it on the boards, we do everything we possibly can, but I think that may be helpful, especially on the intersections of where the voting may take place. So if we, even, I know we have a board that we use sometimes for snow and ice season up off of Livingston Street. If we could use that to remind people as they're driving up 38 for maybe that day, today's election day, something like that, you know, and then we can turn it back to the snow and ice and is needed, or whatever. But we can change those messages for the day to get people out to vote.
Yeah, we have the electric message board we've got, the DPW, because we're going to be doing some paving over the next few weeks, especially on main roads. But we do have other message boards, we can use that, not electronic, I'm sure we can get.
And we have the sign boards someplace, I think they're in the building someplace. I just don't think we've used them.
We have used them recently with the new board in Center Town, which has been used a lot.
I think those will be helpful to get on the intersections, if we could just get them out, just, people notice them when they're out there.
We'll get them out.
All right, thank you.
Any comments?
No, good, thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
I actually do have a question for the town manager. With early voting and mail voting, I'm just curious if we need to consider maybe changing the timing of our approval of this warrant and doing it a little bit earlier? I don't know if you, the town clerk, have an opinion on that, but...
So you're actually not approving, this is more for posting purposes than anything. The ballot is rarely generated and approved through the Secretary of State's office. So although you voted to approve it and to have it posted, there's not much, nothing more you can do or do it earlier. The ballots really came in over the last couple of weeks. So I think you're in, as long as this is posted over the next few days, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and post the state election warrant for November 8, 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is unanimous approval for the posting of the election warrant for November 8, 2022. Moving on, discussion around the retail marijuana application process. There is no action vote required on this. This is more for review of edits and discussion around the items that were sent out. Questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. So I want to thank the manager and staff for putting this together, and I think it's complete. One thing I think that would be good to consider adding is some language that indicates the board may not issue a liquor license. So, excuse me. Marijuana retail license. So it's dependent on what the applications are. Just because we have many applications doesn't mean we will necessarily award three. We might award one, we might award none, we might award two, whatever that is. But I think it would be efficacious to have language that, we already know that we have the right to do that, but to put folks who read this sort of on notice for the board's consideration.
Question on that item B, as it currently stands under the regulation. Are you recommending exposition on that item, or...
Not on B, it would be more down in probably D or 37.12 Application Process Guidelines. Just a sentence, maybe in that section there. Let's see if Mr. Montori with staff would, you know, make better language than what I'm throwing out, but the essence is we can award up to three, but the board needs to know, we don't like any of the applications. And I haven't seen any applications, but I just want to say, I want folks to understand that we don't have to award to the ones that come before us first necessarily, just that we reserve that right.
Perfect, thank you.
In writing.
All right.
We're focusing on action.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, is the plan to do some additional homework on this, then come back and, so we're going to do some homework, polish it, come back and essentially approve it?
Correct, yeah, we're not taking action tonight. This is more for socialization and reviewing the changes that the administration has posed.
And this is pretty thorough already, and we already had a start. You can just literally Google most towns and cities that already have it implemented, and it's pretty darn close, so I think it's going to be some easy work. When are we targeting to get this back sooner than later?
I'd like to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting, and if the board's prepared then to make a decision on that, that's fine. If not, then they can push it off to the meeting after then.
Very good.
Is there any, I mean, I see that we're reviewing this, but is there any input from the residents on, you know, we've made a lot of changes in the community, so, and we recently updated the zoning bylaws, and so we have different zoning for what can go into each zone in the community. So with that updated, and then this recent change, I'm confused on some of the things of where it goes, it just, and I thank you very much for the map that we were provided with, but I think this would be helpful, that, you know, we're going to have a lot of residents that are curious of where other places can go. I'd like to have the town supplying the information than some of the information that's going out through news outlets, because I'm not sure of all if it's accurate. You know, it seems like we get an application and it's something's posted out there, and, you know, is this accurate information? I'd rather have the town take the lead on it. We have a website, so is there a place that, we're going to have guidelines from what the state can do, what we can do, all the new regs and things. This map would be helpful, that residents can take a look at if they have concerns about something being put in their neighborhood or near a church or whatever, any other concerns, a school, or anything else. I just want to make the residents be comfortable with, these are the locations that are currently approved to be able to do it with the new rezoning. And I don't think anybody's really, other than the one, you know, the people of us that have reviewed it and been on it, but I just want the residents to be known, you know, here's the new zoning that we came up with. You know, general business, the salt district, you know, I've gotten numerous questions, why can it go here but it can't go two blocks over when it's on a main roadway? And I'm like, you know, that's, and they're very good questions, you know, it's just, why here, not there, where can it go? So they have, they want to know where it can go, what's going on with it, what the timetables are, you know, so if somebody has to go through the state and get approval and, you know, I get a lot of questions that I'd like to be able to go through this off. You know, it's like, you know, is this going to be something that we're going to be, you know, do the people lease the properties? Is it properties they own, you know? Is the license movable? You know, all kinds of different things that are going to be, we issue a license to somebody, you know, does that license stay with them if that location and the lease moves? And do they have to reapply to move to a different location in the same area? Or does that license come back to us? Or do they have to reapply? You know, all kinds of different things, scenarios that may come into effect. And so, you know, I, you know, we'll go through this, and I'm glad you brought the drafts so the public can know that we should be talking about it now. But I also was wondering if there was a way that the residents could put some input into this as well.
So will, other board members have mentioned this also, about getting information out of the website, and we're working on developing something, a section or a link on the website or a page on the website where we can put all the information, so we're working on that. As far as getting resident input, short of the board holding a public hearing on the regs, I'm not sure how else you would get them. I think if the board has any questions, especially ones you just listed, they should get them to me between now and the next meeting, so we can track down the answers, catch any answers, and come over with them at the next meeting. But we can do all of the above, if the board should decide that you want to have at the next meeting a public hearing on the regs, we'll get it, it's up to you. It's not the first time the board's had the regulations. They adopted them prior to town meeting. We just changed them the last, since town meeting ended after reviewing them and some of the questions at town meeting, laying out the application process, so that's clear to all applicants, they can refer to the process. to all applicants, who can refer to the process, uh, for the board's selectment, for the residents staying in the process. So we just wanted to tighten it up, those kind of questions and comments that made at the town meeting, further reviewing the application, uh, the regulations. So, um, the board could just have, if you want it at the next meeting, you can, you could make part of the meeting public hearing, get input that night and then your meeting after that, adopt them. So that's up to you.
That's the easiest way I know else you give president.
May I respond to our? I do want to kind of call out the delineation between the zoning piece. Um, I know a number of us were involved with the zoning bylaw over a number of years. I was there at the, the tail end of it. There were people that came out and talked about it. We specifically carved this out from that because more input was needed. And there were a few individuals that came out and came to meetings, reached out to the town manager, et cetera, but, um, as much as we want to be user friendly and make sure that the information is available, um, I think the, the questions around zoning are much more difficult to change at this point. However, with the licensing policies and regulations, that is something that I think we should continue to accept feedback on, refine, and, uh, it's a new process for us. We've, we've got some legwork to do. We've, we had an initial draft, we've taken some changes, we're continuing to iterate. So I think we're on the right track. Uh, Mr. Johnson, I realize I'd forgotten about you over there, so I wanna pivot over and give you a chance to respond.
Sure, no problem. Um, I actually, um, having reviewed these, um, I'm pretty comfortable with, with the draft that we have and I know that, um, as the town manager mentioned, we, we've had these for a while. We made some, um, revisions following the town meeting. Um, but one point that I wanna stress, uh, clearly there's a lot of activity in town right now with community meetings, um, and that is part of the process. Those community meetings are driven by private parties, um, not driven by the town of Tewksbury. Um, I think it's important to note that in the last paragraph of these regs, uh, clearly state that this board, uh, will not schedule any public hearings on request for a license until the attorney general's office signs off on the, um, zoning bylaw change and also the, um, bylaw change that was, um, put forward. So, um, I think it's important for everyone to just recognize that, um, this isn't on a fast track. This is gonna be something that we have to wait a little bit, um, and, uh, they'll, we'll get back around to it when, um, state government, uh, approves the actions that the town took. And in the meantime, we can, um, get our house in order with these regs, um, and be prepared to follow that process once, uh, we're able to do that. So I know there's concern in the community because there's been a lot of meetings, um, but, uh, nothing's happening, uh, tomorrow for sure.
Great comment. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments, questions, concerns on this item?
Just one quick comment to piggyback on Mr. Johnson. Mr. Montori, what's a typical turnaround, um, to get approval for what just got approved at town meeting?
Supposed to be, it's supposed to be 90 days, uh, but the full bylaw review or rewrite that the town approved, many still hasn't been approved. And they asked for several extensions. I think the latest one takes us past, uh, you know, mid, um, mid-November, maybe early December. So until that's approved, they know they're gonna look at the, or give us an approval on that, um, retail marijuana.
So to Mr. Johnson's, well, we have a little bit of runway here too.
Absolutely, yeah, so that's okay to, to, you know, we have some more meetings. Give me the questions so we can get an answer, give me your concerns so we can try to address them, incorporate them, um, what, what they're comfortable with regulations, um, and decide if you want us to pass some type of public hearings, what you guys want.
Perfect, thank you. Alrighty. Moving on, uh, 1775 Andover Street. The comments for the project eligibility for Mass Housing Partnership. I believe we have somebody here to speak on that. Perfect. Name and address for the record, please, and then a quick overview of what you guys can.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Tocchio. I'm counsel for, uh, Sawyer Residential and then the applicant, Jessica Rosenberg is with me. She's, uh, the principal and, um, I think just for efficiency, I'll run through quickly an overview and then, um, she or I can, uh, both answer any questions that you may have. Um, this has to do with the, um, project eligibility response draft that's been put together, um, by the town for your consideration with your input. Also, uh, with Alex, we met, uh, on site on the 17th, um, and we went through, um, with, um, several.
Just hold it up like you're singing or something.
Several members, uh, of, uh, boards, uh, to elicit, uh, and receive comments. Uh, the comments that were discussed on site are all summarized, uh, within the proposed draft letter. Um, I don't think that there's anything in the letter that, um, we would necessarily disagree with. Um, what we're looking at is an adaptive reuse of the residence and its extended, uh, stay, uh, use, which is going to be converted to 130 units, which will consist of 34 two bedrooms and then 96 one bedrooms. Uh, we've been very active with Mass Housing Partnership, uh, and specifically, uh, what we did was we requested a, um, waiver from the requirement there, there'd be a number of three bedroom units. And that has to do with just the nature of the existing, um, property, walls, floor plates, kitchens, et cetera economically, um, and that's one of the criteria that Mass Housing looks at. Uh, economically, it makes sense as an adaptive reuse. Uh, some of the comments, uh, that are, um, were made, uh, were anticipated also within our general plans. For example, um, if you go to a residence and you stay there as a guest, there'll be a pool there, um, other amenities such as a kitchen down in the lobby where they'll make breakfast, et cetera. And, um, some of the questions were, can those be, uh, eliminated, retrofitted to other uses? In particular, some of the comments had to do with, um, recreational uses. So because they are, um, reconstructed hotel rooms, uh, they're not necessarily large like, you know, many of us who have, um, larger apartments or single family homes would be used to for space. So de facto, they're a little smaller in size, which also, um, lends to their affordability quotient, which is a plus. Um, but what happens is, um, some of the comments said that, you know, during COVID, a lot of work from home, um, you know, people go a little stir crazy and that, you know, people need recreational outdoor outlets. Um, what we're prepared to do is to take a look at some of those exterior amenities, also the interior to see if we can come up with some programming, whether it's, um, playground type, uh, facilities. Additionally, a significant portion of the site is the wetland system, uh, which is also where the, um, the, oh, yeah, the tight tension, uh, wires are. We'll need to take a look at that, but we think that it lends itself to some opportunities for some, um, hiking, et cetera type of, um, opportunities. So we'd like to look at that. Also speak with Alex, um, because obviously there are limitations with respect to, um, you know, conservation considerations. Uh, and then I would say finally, um, there was a question about the parking. Um, right now there's a thinking that the existing parking, uh, may not be sufficient. We have not gone through to specifically study this property. This property falls, um, within the range, albeit the lower range of some similar projects that we have undertaken. So what we'll do is we'll ask, um, our consultants to take a look and both, uh, come up with further information on what would be appropriate for the ratios. At the same time, um, we're walking with Mark, taking a look at some of the, uh, spaces to see if we've got an opportunity where we can expand parking on site without, again, with the wetland systems around our preference. I would assume that the town's preference would also be that we attempt to maintain, uh, the development within the footprint and do everything that we can not to increase impervious areas. So that's something that we have to follow up with now that it's all been identified. And, um, the recommendation is that we continue to speak with, um, with Alex's, the planning department, see if we can come up with some of those, um, solutions or suggestions, uh, as to how we would make additions there. And as far as Mass Housing Partnership is concerned, um, they had Katie Lacy, who's one of their analysts, who was there meeting with us on site. Um, I believe the discussion was that the criteria for, um, just, you know, the reputational success of the developer, their accomplishments, um, accomplishments of the team, et cetera. We all met that criteria. Also the pro forma, the numbers, the financials, um, they did have, um, some follow-ups, but more specific to, um, the adaptive reuse of a, of a hotel. Because where they already, Sawyer already owns it, they already operate it and it's got a pretty decent occupancy rate, um, they actually have to go out and do their own appraisal. And it's interesting because it introduces a whole nother layer of, um, actual objective information that'll go into the entire, um, analysis. The bottom line is that, um, from a national flag such as, um, the Marriott, this isn't necessarily what their current product is. They like, um, you know, more aggregated townhouse-y type of properties. So believe it or not, despite the fact that this is not that old, it tends to be somewhat antiquated with respect to what their, um, you know, what their proposed or their current models are. Um, with that, um, we believe that the letter makes sense. Uh, we would ask that it be issued, um, in the condition that it's in and we can certainly answer any questions, um, that you folks may have for us this evening.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Montori, so just for my own edification, what we are looking at here tonight is approval of this letter being sent, correct?
Correct. The town has, uh, had 30 days to respond to, uh, Mass Housing regarding the comments to the application. The departments, we had an internal review meeting regarding the project. Uh, some departments actually walked the site. Um, they provided comments that are incorporated in this letter. Public officials who attended the walk or reviewed the application have provided comments, which again are incorporated. And they're also added as an appendix, so their specific comments are included. Also, I think we've captured all of the concerns that, um, departments and public officials who have been involved have raised. And, uh, other than any input and comments from the board tonight, um, we'd like to forget the letter approved, uh, subject any amendments and put them in the board and send it off this week.
Perfect, thank you. All right, uh, so we'll open it up to questions from the board. Mr. Kelly?
I think folks will always ask, um, you know, this has been very thorough. Thank you for working with the town and apartment heads and the board as well. You guys have been very thorough, so I thank you for that. Mr. Montori, where's that put us for numbers? Do we, are we still facing around 2010-ish, today's census, 2022 census?
Yeah, the numbers are not being, uh, changed yet. Um, we don't expect to see anything, um, before, now we're here, we're not gonna see new numbers until March. Um, so still technically under the, uh, 10% requirement for subsidized units. If the numbers did come in, you know, once we get them in the numbers, we believe this could put us over, but then they not, we don't know. So I don't want anybody to leave it tonight thinking if this is, if this goes forward as approved, we'll be over the 10%. We don't know.
I'm good based on location and the reuse, I think it's, it's, um, it's, it's really put together really nicely, so I have no issues with that. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just, uh, I may have missed it. I couldn't hear, um, Mr. Montori's comments in full, but how many, how many units would we be gaining potentially in total?
130.
One third?
Yes. Of the 130 units, 33 are actually booked.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Um, and I, I think it was mentioned, but, um, it's pretty clear that the, uh, town departments, uh, were very involved in this, uh, process and, uh, their, their comments and notes are attached to our materials. Um, so I'm very comfortable with the letter because we had a, a team, uh, look at this and, uh, represent the town's interest well.
Thank you. And all, and all of the comments all follow exactly what they actually said to us there on site, so, um, we're pleased with that. No surprises on our, our side either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my colleagues have said it well, it's a, it's a great project and an important project in our community because affordable housing is a significant concern. Um, I, I understand that 33 of the units was just said will be considered affordable. Um, what, at what level of AMI will they be considered affordable?
So we are doing the 25% of the building at 80% AMI. Um, the kind of interesting thing with this project, given the nature of the size of the units that are there, 450 square foot studios, 650 square foot one bedrooms, if you look at what those 80% AMI rates and how they rents are and how they compare to our market rents, they're very close because the reality is what are you gonna rent a 650 square foot apartment for? So that's kind of what makes this project in our minds really great and really unique because while technically only 80% of it is reg, from a regulatory standpoint, is deed restricted, affordable, I think our max, I think our rents range from like 1600 to 2100, which is, you know, five to 500 to $2,000 cheaper than anything else, you know, in the market justified because the units are smaller.
Um, I'm, I'm, that's, I appreciate the information. I'm a little disappointed that there aren't some units that are going to be reserved at something like 30 to 40% AMI because low threshold housing is critically needed in our area. Will any of the units be offered furnished?
There will be an option. So all the units are furnished now. Um, we will likely update the furniture. Um, but yes, there will be furnished options for market rate and affordable.
I know that that will, for some families that will be, that are desperate for housing, that would be very welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It is a good project and I'm looking forward to it.
And I, you know, Jeff always says, don't talk too much, but one thing I, I will say, you know, we have, our company has done a lot of affordable housing over the years. Um, and we just, we finished zoning approval on a project in Lynn and similar things have come up. For us, you know, there was, you know, the other 40B option is 50% AMI and it's, it's less percentage of the building. And we kind of looked at all the different scenarios. Unfortunately, because of the level of improvements that this property needs to be code, ADA, all of that, if we could have done it, if we could have, if it was economically feasible to have lower rents at a lower AMI, we absolutely would have done it. I don't think we would have been able to do the project. Um, so we did look at it for what it's worth.
Well, there are grants available for some of that and, um, we have a housing trust. So had you approached the town that way, that might've been something we could have considered and I hope that we will have you as a voice, an active voice in our communities as we look to develop more affordable housing.
Absolutely, yes.
Experience and voice in that work.
Yes, we're always open. Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. I appreciate your kind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crabb?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I brought up at the public meeting, I brought, we had, we had a walkthrough, we went through and I brought up a number of potential, uh, problems that I saw. Um, it's, uh, the one bedrooms, I, you know, there's definitely need for upgrades, you need a handicap accessibility, the ADA, a lot of the sidewalks and access to the parking spots and there's, there's no real ADA compliance out there. Upgrades to some of the stairwells and all that, and you mentioned how you're gonna be doing all this, there's renovations being made. Uh, but my, my major concerns was the two bedroom apartments and, um, the, there's a living room and two bedrooms that are separated and the way that they're set up currently, there's like sliders that block each of them off. And that doesn't leave a lot of space and, uh, quiet space, or especially if this is converted into, you know, uh, you know, a family with a couple of small kids or things. There's definitely some concerns I have of, you know, somebody working from home or there's the mental health of people being confined in a small area. Um, in this, you know, these, uh, right now are currently used as, you know, people coming to visit and moving on, but if somebody's living here and there, things, there isn't really a lot of outside space for, you know, if somebody's working home, you know, I want some quiet time, there's, there isn't really a lot of that, it, with the confinements of what the way they're made. Um, if there's some way to, when you're looking at these renovations, instead of having those sliding doors, maybe put something, a little sound barrier or something so if somebody's in a bedroom that's, maybe has a small office or something like that, somebody's working from home, that seems to be the way everyone's working. Anything that, any little improvements like that would be helpful. Um, there was something that I did miss when I was just looking at the access to that. Um, we talked about parking spots, uh, there, there isn't enough from what I can see right now. Um, I, there's, it seems to be some availability to maybe create some, but I don't even know if that's gonna get you to the threshold of, of, uh, you know, having maybe two or three cars. Seems like there's one car per unit right now and if you're gonna have a two bedroom and have some people living there, you know, you know, there may be two cars or three cars, you know, especially if somebody moves in with a teenager, that's going to be a concern. But the access, there's a sidewalk that goes along 133 there. Your driveway, when you're coming out, doesn't have a way of connecting to that. So when you come out, there is a sidewalk that's along your area, but it kind of brings you into the parking lot. So there's nothing that connects. So if, now we're going to have people living there and people want to have some walkability, especially if they have children walking through our community. And if, and if a bus stop may be a concern as well. If, you know, we have kids that are going to be joining our school system, how do they get to that and how do they safely get out of that thing? Because you have a sheer driveway with a, with a mobile station and vehicles sometimes come in at a high rate of speed, coming off that roadway to go get gas. I want to make sure it's safe for anybody walking out of that to get to those access. So that's another comment, if you could, I know you're looking at parking spots or when you're doing your engineering. Sure, all this will be brought up through the planning board or zoning by law or whatever, may have to take a look at this. But that's a number one thing I can see. There's an area that's landscaped with a grass area, but I'd like to see that made some sort of sidewalk and especially ADA compliant. We don't know if somebody's going to be in their wheelchair, if somebody needs some accessibility. And, you know, we'll probably have some conversations about where the kids currently in that area are picked up. There is some residential area down the street, but doesn't seem to be anything right there.
We usually deal with school departments, transportation, where do the buses go? Where do they turn around? In other towns, we've put in pads for school bus stops. We'll explore definitely the connectivity out to 133. We'll have to take a look at that easement as well that we have.
You got a grassed area right there, which it seems like is a simple fit. So just connecting that, it just, you know, for the current use, it's fine. But if people are living there, it's just going to change the use of people using our community. And there's plenty of places for the kids to get down to Livingston Street. It's a little bit of a walk, but, you know, kids are young, they don't mind walking. So, you know, we're just having that accessibility to get out to our community would be helpful.
And it's good points on also the work from home. We're considering where we talked about the kitchen down in the lobby. We're exploring a concept of a co-working space. That also is one of the reasons that I think that the parking requirement, we do need more of a study. It's really changed. And what we're finding is that next generations do not have car ownership rates that, you know, my generation, our generation certainly saw. So we'll take a look at that. What we do is we look at other comparable properties and then we're able to get an array of what the ratios are. Right now, if we do it on a per bedroom, I think we're around 0.85. So the question's going to be as a per unit, as a per bedroom. We'll, we'll boil that down and get more of our ranges. So instead of just picking a number, we'll actually try to approach it with a little more like intentionality, once we know a little more. The co-working space, I think that's going to be something that you don't see elsewhere. But again, the lobby that's there, if you walk in there, that's what people are doing. So what we're trying to do is not necessarily fight against some of the uses. We're trying to work with it. So storage, you also mentioned storage. There are different areas on site that wouldn't really admit, you know, don't lend themselves to use by people who are just there on transient nature. But what happens is, once we have people who are there, whether it's bicycles, you know, things like that, we're also looking at dedicated onsite type storage areas. So all the input that we got during the site meeting was really good. And we'll follow up again with Alex. She had, she's had excellent recommendations steering us on this. And this allows us to, you know, go even deeper. We don't yet know what the timing is going to be. Obviously, we need to hear back from Mass Housing Partnership. But at least what we were hearing was that, that the specialized appraisal is the next step. And right now, appraisers are in high demand. So we didn't know what the timing was going to be, particularly with the, about five weeks. She said, okay.
From last week, yeah.
So that, so that's probably pretty good. Question is, where does it hit during the holidays? But hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to get, get that going. If we could do before the end of the year, that would work for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Johnson?
No further questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was tired with you. Fair enough. All right, so my primary question was around parking. I think we've talked about that more than enough. I do appreciate the data-driven direction you're taking with trying to assess, is it based on bedroom, is it based on unit? So kudos for that. Also wanted to commend the method of thinking around kind of reusing some of those spaces that may not have a home in a project like this. That shared working space is a great concept. And I want to encourage you, as you mature this project, to continue thinking about those kind of forward-thinking aspects.
Definitely.
Thank you. So I will open it up to the board, pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to endorse the 1775 Anover Street Project Eligibility for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
Sir.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That is unanimous for approval, endorsement of the letter for 1775 Main Street. Good to go there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, does he want to sign it as a group or do you want him to just sign it?
We've already got it going, right?
No, that's the one.
Great question.
I'm the chair to sign it.
I'd support it.
Chair? Chair?
Can you make a motion to that, or can the chair assign it?
I make a motion that we authorize Chairman Todd Johnson to sign for endorsement.
Second. All right, all those in favor? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. All righty, moving forward, we are to the town manager section. Mr. Montori, you're up.
The tentative select board meeting?
I apologize, I missed an item. Thank you very much. Item number seven, 2023 tentative select board meeting dates. Believe everyone has had a chance to review these. We'll open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments, holdouts? And I would ask for consideration on, do we want to approve this tonight? Or do we want to give it another meeting if people need additional time to review?
I only have one question.
Ms. Wellman?
I looked at all these dates, they're all, they're all non-holiday, you know, major holidays, stuff like that, from my own edification. April 25th, this doesn't really matter to me anymore because I'm an empty nester. But is April 25th school vacation week and does that matter for this board?
It's usually the week after.
It's like it falls in that.
It's usually, no, but the, it's where the, where the marathon is usually that Monday. I think it's usually the 14th that is, seriously, the 10th. That's what it usually tends to, it's like, so I think it's the week before. I haven't looked at the calendar, but I, but I believe it's in the teens.
I'm cool with this schedule.
I think it's the week before.
Yeah.
Right. Motion to approve the meeting dates as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote to approve the 2023 select board meeting dates. Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That is unanimous approval of the 2023 select board meeting dates.
And just a note on that, I know we've had issues in the past, which we brought up, that, you know, some holiday that we unaware of or something came up, these, we've always made changes. So if there is something that's brought up to us from the public that it's on some sort of thing, there, there are movable dates that we'll be able to change in the future.
Great call. Yes, we will continue, as has been our practice, to amend dates as needed if there is a religious or otherwise holiday that we are not aware of that warrants moving the date.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Montori, you are up.
Thank you, Chairman. I have just a couple of things. Approving town council invoices. The trust is from September 1st through September 15th. And the amount is $3,910.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the town council invoice from September 1st through September 15th. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just, I, I, Mr. Johnson, I, I know we, you mentioned in one of the meetings before that the, the person who's recording these meetings had specifically asked that we mentioned that we, who made the motion. So we're just, I don't know if we had to clarify that as we're, as we're voting on these things. I think you brought it up at the last meeting, that they asked, you know, just to make who, who made the motion or whatever it is for the, for the thing, that's all. Is that still in effect or is that something that was requested?
The more clarity we can offer, the better, but this is a recorded meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Good, thank you.
Mr. Montori?
There's a second town council invoice from September 16, 2022. Number 30, 2022, and amounts of $4,887.50, I recommend approval.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion from Mr. Kelly and a second from Ms. Wellman. Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well for the approval of the town council invoice, September 16 through September 30, 2022. Mr. Montori?
And the last is a town council invoice from July 1, 2022, or September 30th, 22, 30th, 2022, and the amount is $4,050. This would mainly related to the land sales that we had and deed related documents and recording fees. Amounts of $4,050.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kelly. Roll call, vote. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Krabnik?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous approval of the town council invoice from July 1st, 2022, through September 30, 2022, pertaining to deeds and related documents, recording fees in the amount of $4,050. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I believe we have some minutes for approval.
Mr. Chairman, can we accept all of these minutes? We vote to approve them all together, is that package?
Absolutely.
So to that end, I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 5th, 2019, March 20, 2020, September 15, 2020, November 17, 2020, February 18, 2021, executive session, February 23rd, 2021, February 25th, 2021, executive session, March 2nd, 2021, and March 4th, 2021, executive session.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Krabnik. Roll call, vote. Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to vote abstain. I was not a participant in any of these meetings, so I don't know what happened.
Fair enough. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Krabnik?
I mean, Mr. Krabnik?
Aye. I'm born and for him.
Chair is going to abstain as well, as I was also not present for a number of these. So we have a 302 abstentions for the approval of the minutes on September 5th, 2019, March 20, 2020, September 15, 2020, November 17, 2020, February 18th, 2021, executive session, February 23rd, 2021, February 25th, 2021, executive session, March 2, 2021, and March 4, 2021, executive session. Okay, that was a mouth.
I was going to say, can you tell that again?
I think I missed one.
Okay, moving forward, board member reports. Mr. Krabnik?
Okay, so LRTA, we're meeting this Thursday. We, and we, I got two meetings on Thursday. The North and Trehan Reuse Committee is having a public outreach session this Thursday. We'll be at the high school to be listening to questions about the reuse. We had a meeting last Thursday, which was quite informative. Just, we had the superintendent of schools, Mr. Libby came and the chair of the school committee came, Bridget Gary-Bedian. And initial response from that meeting is that the school seems to have a use for the North Street property, that they prefer that we not develop or do something with it. They prefer that we leave that as a possible use for another elementary school building that they're going to apply for and for future use. They explained that when they originally built, you know, the high school had to be built. It wasn't the number one need. But because of accreditation and all their, whatever rules that they need to follow, they had to do the high school. They then applied to do all the elementary schools at one time and do like a mass, a major building, which was turned down through the state. They preferred making the one that we have right now. But that is not filling their need because we still have two elementary school buildings that are still in great need. And so they plan to apply at some point. You know, they, they're under the, you know, the same thing happened when we applied for the, the original one after the high school. They apply and most likely they'll probably be turned down the first couple of years because we already got one, you know, and so you, you end up in the pecking order. But there is a request that they're going to be doing something with that. The reuse committee is still looking at the possibility of doing something in the part-time with that thing and making recommendations to the board that maybe as a temporary use for the community, you know, if we're going to do something, leave the playground there, which was built with some of the town funds, not relocate it and maybe use the land for some sort of community outreach while they're in the process of applying for this. But they do plan on applying for a new elementary school building. So there's another development that's probably coming our way in the community. And the other, the last two things that I just want to talk about is that the senior, the Friends of the Elderly held a breakfast. They haven't done something like this because of COVID in years. So the, the senior center is doing wonderful. They created, they re-energized and created the Friends of the Elderly, which they did a breakfast down there. They're expecting 75 to maybe 100 people. They got well in excess of 200, 300 people. It was great, you know, everyone come out of the things, you know, the, the senior center was vibrant. It was all, it was great to see everybody going around, seeing friends and doing something. So I just want to give kudos to them. They did a wonderful job. And the last thing is the police department, fire department did the Safe Halloween. The place was jammed. The kids came down, everybody had a great time. The costumes, the people, the businesses that came out and helped support. It was great to see something for the whole community where, you know, private and our town departments working with all the businesses to create something for the community. And the kids all came down, had a great time. So kudos to our town, we should be very proud of them. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I want to commend the town manager and his department heads for their preparation for our special town meeting. And I want to say that I'm extremely proud of our community for the way that they addressed a number of issues that were before them at special town meeting. And I think collectively, we moved our town two steps forward, which in my opinion is a terrific legacy that we'll have to work on. So I want to thank the town manager for his preparedness and his department heads for doing all the state work that's necessary to build up to town meeting and support the many requests that we put before town meeting attendees. And I think we're seeing that the preparedness, the transparency, the level of information that's put forward is paying dividends, if you will, for, for the process. So kudos to, to those involved who made that happen. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kelly?
All good here, thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
That's great. I would echo the comments of Mr. Johnson. The town meeting was very well done and well-prepared for it by all of our staff and it was impressive. So the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee met last night. Um, we need to appoint two new members, so that will need to be a future agenda item and we will need to, um, I think it's already noted on the website that we have two vacancies, but we should do that and, um, encourage folks to apply for those seats. Uh, we had a significant number of applications the first time around. So hopefully some of those folks will, um, reapply. So we have two seats open. Um, and part of our conversation last night was around a significant increase in the unhoused population in Tewksbury. Um, for many, many folks may not be aware, but the, the population of folks that are homeless, that are living in cars or living in the woods are largely invisible to most of us. They're, um, behind a Walmart and so forth. Um, and to this end, um, I wish to commend, uh, Officer Kim O'Keefe, who has started a blanket and sweatshirt drive, um, to help these folks because usually, um, they can have, the resources that we have in town can house these individuals for the winter. And that is looking to be a significant challenge based on the information we were given last night. So, um, I would encourage residents to, um, purchase new and, new blankets and new sweatshirts and socks and drop them off in the police department lobby. There is a collection box there. Um, it's a conversation we need to continue to have. Um, it's part of the reason I was asking those questions of the residents in because we need to increase our low threshold in affordable housing from town significantly. Um, and the stories are, are heartbreaking. Um, additionally, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee is going to try to, um, start a community refrigerator project. Um, I don't know if folks know about this, but, um, we are looking for the donation of a refrigerator that, um, and I know there are folks in town that are, need to get rid of one and will be procuring a new one, um, in advance of the holidays. So before you throw out your refrigerator or recycle it, we are looking for a donation of at least one, um, to create this, this program and, um, develop some more information as we go, but this, um, this just happened last night. So I, um, hope that folks can be supportive of that program and, um, it's exciting to see if we can bring this forward and help, um, the truly, um, needy in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. A couple of notes from myself in closing. Uh, one, I want to echo Mr. Johnson's sentiment, uh, Mr. Montori, to you and your staff for the success of town meeting, as well as all those who came out and voted. Uh, on the vein of voting, uh, elections are coming up. Information is available on the town website. Please go educate yourself, make sure you know where you're going, what you need to do, uh, and when you can vote. Uh, additionally, uh, made a, notified the board, uh, about two months ago that we were receiving a grant from Dragos, uh, for a cybersecurity project, uh, working with Jamie Bet, RIT Director. We're actually getting ready to kick that off. Uh, so we'll actually be able to put that, uh, almost hundred thousand dollars to, to good use. So that will be a great upcoming project that is sorely needed. And the Veterans Breakfast, November tenth. Uh, Mr. Montori, is information available for that on the website?
It should be, there is, I can make sure there is.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, I would encourage everyone to go out and support that event.